Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chris Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Have a quorum.
Awesome. Could we please stand and do the pledge, and Astor, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. How many people do we have signed up for public comment?
Just one. We just have one mayor, David Kozinski.
Okay.
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. This morning, or today is supposed to be trash pickup day in my area of Sunshine Ranches. And before I left for work this morning, laid my trash out as usual, got home, bag is still there, and every neighbor down my entire street trashes out. You go down Lou Ray Street, trash is all out there. If it had been a, just missing my home, I said, okay, you know what, I'll just make a little quick report. But, you know, I just, I just got home not too long ago, so I wasn't able to go online and do the check. But to think that they missed the entire two streets, sounds like a little something more than just a slip-up. It may be something that maybe the driver forgot, I don't know. But that's my complaint. Thank you.
We'll get on it. No additional public comment?
We have one other speaker, Mayor?
Okay.
Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Just a couple of things. One, I found out through conversations while I was sick and recovering, that the Southwest Ranches International Airport is no more. And that's sort of depressing to me. And the other thing was a good thing, that I found out when I called the town and spoke to them, that one of my orphan projects has finally been completed out by Steve. And that is the drain pipe from Frontiero Trails that goes all the way to the canal now. So I can scratch that off my list after nine and a half years of bugging the council. The only thing left on my list is getting the bridges built by the federal government over the C-11 Canal down by 205, realign Bonner Venture Bridge for a trail, but I have to convince Weston, the trail on Sterling Road, where we take two lanes and convert it to a trail in Southwest Ranches. And the master drainage plan for the west side of town. So when things which come up that needed to be taken, such as an easement for drainage, or an easement for a trail, or something like that, it's taken, instead of giving the building permit before and signing it off, and we then don't have it. Or, so, okay, that's it. Speak to you later.
Thank you. Any additional public comment, or we're good?
We have one other speaker, Mayor John Eastman.
Okay.
That's the final speaker, Mayor.
Evening, council. Just coming over the bridge on 75, another three-car accident at the light.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Board reports? Any board reports? Okay?
We're bored. Last night, the Historical Society would like to recognize one of our residents that has left the town, and that would be Alan Kay. And he moved over to the west coast, and we were discussing that he had a big impact on the landscaping in this town from the beginning. And so we would like the council to make the presentation. We'll buy it, and we'd like to have you all invite him over for it, in a thank you effort on our part to let him know that he had a very positive impact on this town for landscaping and preservation of it. He was very involved in Griffin Road's landscaping, and he was very involved in the beginning with the parks. The Equestrian Park was a nightmare, and he came through on that by going through and making sure that the landscaping, it had been put in too deep, it was not number ones, da-da-da-da-da, so on and so forth. And at that point, we were babes in the woods. And then, of course, he had an impact on us getting the roof donated at the Rolling Oaks Park, so, and the landscaping in Rolling Oaks itself. So I think that I'd like you all to address it, make a motion, or whatever you have to do, and invite him here for the presentation, and let him know that, you know, he did have an impact. Thank you.
I guess talk to Andy about that. Yeah. Okay. Any additional board reports? Seeing none. Councilmember comments? Who'd like to go first? Go ahead, Steve.
Just a couple of quick things. I would support the Alan Kay. I know he was one of those guys that was here when we, town was formed, and did a lot of, a lot of stuff to help build this town and get us going when, like you said, we were kind of, went behind the ears. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I think I mentioned it last time, but we're still working on it, I want to kind of out there so that people are aware of it. And I've spoken to more folks since the last time we got together. But we are going to be putting together a, kind of a town hall meeting for the folks specific, everybody's welcome, but specifically for the nurseries that are south of 63rd, east of 190th, and west of 185th, to talk about the potential of putting in an access road out there to help reduce the traffic that is going through that area, and frankly, to help, you know, kind of move that area along so that homes can be built there. So we're working on that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Andy? Did you want to go?
Well, good evening. I appreciate everybody showing up. I see we have a nice little crowd tonight. I went to the MPO meeting this morning, and what I learned was something that just kind of tickled my fannus, so I'm going to share this with you. And that is, they are contemplating having term limits for the school board members. We can all say yay if we want. Yay! So that was really good. They've appointed new people. There's a lot of stuff that's going to be going on as far as infrastructure, and roadwork and stuff. And I actually got to vote on some of it, and brought it forward to the chair, and said, you know, I know I come to these and I don't really get to vote very much, but I says, what you really don't realize is, all of that affects Southwest Ranches. And it was told to me, well, you don't really have a lot of transportation, or this, or that. But we use all those roads wherever in Broward County, and our tax dollars go for it. So I think it would be behoven if we could have a little bit stronger voice on, on some of the stuff that they are doing, you know, so. Another thing I'd like to bring up is, we have a special thing that goes on, it's called Pioneer Day. And we have a member of our communities that we have suggested be honored for this. It is going to be Saturday, May 12, 2018. And this one is done at Davy Town Hall.
No.
Oh, no? The Old School House. That's where it's going to be done, which is really kind of nice. I don't know if you've ever been in there, but it's really cute. So I would encourage everyone, if you possibly can, to show up, you know, as support for our resident who will be honored for, for this special occasion. Other than that, that's about it?
Awesome. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have a lot to talk about tonight, and I'm going to be brief so that we can get to it all. Just a couple of announcements to make. This Saturday, the 14th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. is the Country Estates Barbecue, located at the Country Estates Park out on Griffin Road. I urge everybody to come. The food's going to be pretty good, I hear, so. I'd urge everybody to come out and try and meet your neighbors, see the park, bring a basketball. Hopefully, they don't have a tent underneath the, underneath the hoop. And just enjoy the afternoon out there. We've got ball fields, we have a lot of good things. And it's a great park. It's got a really nice nature walk. Just bring a can off. You know. The other thing I want to mention is the Parks Foundation is having Bingo at the Barn again on the 19th, December. Did I get that right?
May 19.
May 19. Correct. May 19. Sorry, forgot the May part. At 6 o'clock, 6:00 at night. Say it again, please, I'm sorry.
Dinner at 6.
Dinner at 6. Buy the, you can buy the tickets here at Town Hall, is that correct? Right. All right. And I heard, and I heard the food's pretty good, too, for that one. So I urge everybody to come to that. I would, just like to comment on the Mary Gay's suggestion of a ward for Alan Kay. I've known Alan Kay for many years, and he contributed greatly to our town for decades, even before we became a town. He was involved in, all throughout the 90s, and I would fully support anything that we, we do with him. And I just want to mention that the DMV Flowmobile was canceled for the month of April. Broward County pulled them, and they're going somewhere else. However, they're going to be back in May, I believe, on the 24th. And it's a great service to use, especially if you, if you need, you don't like waiting in lines downtown. And it, they cut through a lot of, a lot of clutter, and it's right down here. So I urge everybody to, to come to see that. And everything else I want to talk about is coming up on the agenda, so I'll just run out again.
Freddie, anything? You're good? Okay. Well, Dino, thanks for all the stuff for the Country Estates Barbecue. That's at 190th and Griffin. Those of you that don't know or haven't been, should be a lot of fun. So come on out and have a good time. And same for the Bingo. I think Bingo last time was sold out, if I recall. So, did we have to bring pennies? Because we, I brought a whole pile of pennies, because I ran out of things to hide the numbers with. Okay, okay. All right. So, other than that, thank all the residents for coming out. We realize most of the time you come out when you have issues. So, but feel free to come anytime. We have two meetings a month, and they're usually anywhere from an hour to two hours, depending on how passionate and how much conversation we have. So thank you for coming out, and feel free to come anytime. Other than that, I'm good. Let's see. Legal comment, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief as well. Want to report, which I sent you all emails on, but to disclose to the public as well, that the town is finally coming off of, essentially, the Office of Inspector General did a approximate five-year audit of all of the town's vendors' contracts. So tens of millions of dollars worth of contracts that they've been going through and driving Marty crazy for probably about a year now. Yesterday, two years, two years, two-year forensic audit. So three auditors, legal counsel, it's a pretty impressive team. After their two-year audit, yesterday, they came to us to present their findings, which is, they believe that of the $4 million spent on the Sun Systems, Sun Bergeron contracts, that the town may have been billed, may have been billed, and they're still looking into it, maybe $50,000 too much. Of that $50,000, the town is withholding close to $70,000. So in the event that they are right, we would just remit the $20,000 and call it a day. I commented quickly to the Office of Inspector General that their two-year audit, which cost them probably $250,000, $300,000 or more, the countless hours of Marty's time here till 10:00 p.m. every single night, getting them the audited documents, wound up in their determination that maybe there's about $50,000 at issue, to which at some point, they will pat themselves on the back and say, look what a great job we did. We saved the taxpayers so much money. So I made that clear to them in our meeting as well. So they're finishing up the audit. I expect them to take another six, seven months to look at that one item that they're looking at, and then issue a report saying how much money they saved everyone in Broward County. I will tell you that the items that they pulled, that they questioned, were so minute that it would take a forensic auditor to really find them. Some of them were discrepancy of a fuel price difference within a one-month region of time. And remember, this is a five-year contract that they looked at. One of them was a coding code which said CWU, and it should have been CUU. So the amount, and Andy, I think, wants to chime in as well, the amounts were so minute that it would have been virtually impossible for anyone, unless you had your own forensic auditor, to be able to find. Clearly, and we've met as staff already, there are things that the town can do to try to prevent some of what they've found, if it comes to light in the future. But the, on the positive side, you know, after reviewing five years of contracts, and, you know, over a two-year period, the town wound up in incredible position, and it's truly a credit to finance and the contract managers that they caught almost every one of the mistakes, and, and that's all that they could find. So it's really great news for the town. Andy?
Yeah, Keith, thank you. I think that was a very accurate and complete summation of what's transpired. The one thing I do want to assure the council, and assure the public as well, is there was nothing that the town did that triggered this audit. This is a routine review that the OIG does. They typically will go out and look at four to five different municipalities every year. So it's just, they'll come in, it's a routine review on their part. It was just our turn, and, you know, we're getting to the end of that. And, you know, next year, it'll be somebody else's turn to have those reviews.
And I should note, I met with the county commissioner today and told them the potential findings, and they were mesmerized how much that the county just paid to come up with that conclusion. I was just mesmerized. I got an email, and it's just something we're throwing out here for future discussion, for, from a resident in Sunshine Ranches today that goes away a lot. And they're very upset that a periodical that they believe is created by the Sun Sentinel called the Trailblazer is thrown on the swell and in front of their house, and to them, when they're out of town, shows that they're not in town because they're piling up periodicals in front of their house. So they wanted me, and they asked me, because they couldn't be here tonight, to bring up to the council whether or not the council is interested in preventing such issues of unwarranted newspaper periodicals being thrown around the town, because they have been unable to stop it. When they call the Sun Sentinel and say, stop sending these to me, stop delivering them to me, they said nothing occurs, and they get home from vacation, and there's multiples sitting on their property. So I promised them I'd bring it up. I'm bringing it up, and it's something that you all may want to discuss in the future. Finally, more on the lighter side, which I mentioned to some of you, I've been diligently trying to move back to Southwest Ranches, and today is the first time I feel like a real rancher, because I got into a fight with my neighbor. So it was a truly wonderful experience when I removed the dilapidated fence that had been there for probably, you know, 15, 20 years, that was falling down on my property, and to which they screamed at me that they're going to sue me because I removed their fence. I told them to feel free to sue me. It wouldn't be the first time this week. And, you know, so I look forward to sharing the follow-up story at a later date. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I actually had several things on my list, and between Keith and council, you've covered everything. I don't have anything else to add. So, thank you.
Okay. Number eight resolution?
Yes, Mayor, this is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, enacting a zoning in progress pursuant to section 005240 of the town's Unified Land Development Code to further regulate any new nursery expansion, any new, any new nursery, expansion of an existing nursery, or storage or growth of any plant material in containers, enacting a zoning in progress for a period of time not to exceed six months or until the town's revised regulations have been adopted, whichever is sooner, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and council, I'll give a brief introduction before you make your motion and turn over to the general public. This actually came out by way of several residents who are here tonight, and what they're dealing with, nurseries, or a potential nursery that may be going into their own community. But in approximately 2005, in an effort to convey the rural lifestyle of the town, the town actually changed the Broward County zoning code to make it less restrictive. And basically, in the Broward County zoning code, it had specific locations and size requirements for nursery operations in the unincorporated area that has now become Southwest Ranches. The council at that time, many of you may recall, had numerous, what we called farm meetings, with numerous people from the Farm Bureau, and committees around the town, and nursery owners at one point, and came to consensus to expand the ability of nurseries to go in many locations within the town, and to limit, in some sense, some of the items brought to those nurseries, et cetera. Now that the town is much older, 13 years older, it's clear that, that unrestricted nature may need to be relooked at, which codes are flexible, and they're subject to change. So as a result of what has come to light recently, and the wonderful neighbors who we've met with even recently, the mayor has asked, and others have asked us, to draft the zoning in progress to prevent any new nursery operations from opening in the town until the town council has the ability to review the regulation again and make a determination if, if changes are warranted. So it's here for your consideration and approval. And if approved, we would request that it goes to the Comp Plan Advisory Board to, on a quick basis, on an expedited basis, to come up with some recommendations from both meeting with nursery owners and the residents, and to, so that we can get this on an agenda as quickly as possible.
Motion to approve? Second. Okay. Motion in a second. Public comment on this matter?
We, the residents of 133rd Avenue, are in agreement with resolution item number eight on tonight's agenda. Further regulations of any new nurseries, expansion of existing nurseries, and et cetera. We would like to be advised of any comprehensive Plan Advisory Board meetings so that we can have some input.
Okay. Anyone else?
One thing I'd like to see happen is, Eastman had a similar situation. It was a residential home on Griffin Road, and they bought it, and they converted it. And what these people do is they have no regard for the drainage, and they fill the property in. And this guy, during the recession, went belly up, and Eastman was getting drowned because he filled everything in, and the property was never brought back to standard. So now, he still puts up with it. The place is vacant, and it's a mess. So I think that if there are nurseries and they close down, that, and I don't know how to do it legally, but legally, they should have to put it back the way it was. They can't leave it and then sell it, and then somebody else is just going to live in a house and leave it the way it is, because it really is truly in violation. And this place over here, he, he filled in the pond, I mean, it's a, it's a nightmare, because he compacted that more than once, and elevated. So there's no perk to that at all. It's going to run off. Everything on that piece of property is going to run off. And we won't know until we get some really good rains. But once we get some rains, my feeling is, the guy next door is the one that's going to take the brunt of the water. Anyway, this is something we really need to look at hard, and whether or not these one-acre home sites that are residential now are going to be able to be converted all over town into nurseries and landscape facilities. 188th has been complaining about it being landscape property. In other words, the landscape companies moved in, and, and it's been a battle. So now they're using the nursery. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question on this. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue, right in the middle of the resolution there. It says, "Any plant material in containers." Does that mean that if it's field-grown, the nursery can go in? Or just, because the way it reads to me is, it's containers nurseries, not field-grown. Thank you.
No?
Bob Hartman, 5441, Southwest 198th Terrace. I totally support this six-month halt on these nurseries. We were able to fight the same guy who's building over here on our street, and the only reason is we had deed restrictions in place, and we've got some covenants that cover commercial properties. Now, the guy who's at the end of my street, sooner or later, he'll sue us to try to change that. We don't want to spend that kind of money. These folks don't want another nursery popping up across the street. This is a great idea. I hope this holds it off for the next six months, and we don't have a nursery pop up under the radar. So maybe code needs to really keep an eye out, out there, to make sure that all of a sudden, on a Saturday, a nursery isn't built. But I support this, and I look forward to working on the new changes we need to make to, to resolve this issue. Thank you.
John Eastman, 188th. Tommy Pinder, the neighbor next door there, came to our drainage meeting, and he's already gotten water. So, you know, we did have a few brief rains. He got a test of it. Covering the entire property with, you know, about 18 inches of lime rock, and compacting it, there's clearly an alternative ulterior motive for doing that there. You don't need to do that to grow plants. What I see happening, probably, is that he'll get his ag exemption, and then you'll see heavy equipment being stored in and out there all day long. It really has nothing to do with growing plants on the property. But it just turns into a commercial address, where you can basically do anything you want under the guise of agriculture. So, I mean, we're hung up on state law on some of this stuff, but we need to be wise about it. And maybe look at putting more restrictions on the type of filling we can do on the properties. Because as Gay said, I've been living with this for over 10 years now, and every time it rains, my backyard is totally underwater, because it all comes off my neighbors. Where he put 18 inches of lime rock and compacted it, and put plastic over it. He's not there anymore, but all that fill is still there. So we need to develop ordinances and ways of dealing with this, because this is the poster child next door here, what's happening. Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this matter? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Go ahead, Steve.
A few comments. First of all, this is a critical item that needs to be worked on. Frankly, it's something that has been, we're seeing more and more, I think, as the economy picks up, it's happening more and more. It's going to become more and more pervasive, and we need to take action. So I completely support this. The, I would recommend that we send this not only to the Comp Board, but also to the Drainage Board, because they look at the same thing from two different angles, and we want to make sure that we get all the input we can. So I would recommend that we send it to both. And with those, those boards, it's volunteer boards, but I would urge you, please, to look at these, know that it's coming, and be thinking about it. these, know that it's coming, and be thinking about it ahead of time, and let's, we need feedback very quickly, is what I'm saying. Within 30 to 60, no more than 60 days, that's for sure. For the residents out there, those two boards meet here at Town Hall in the meeting room next door, and the comp, the comp board meets on the third Thursday of every month, so that's a week from tonight, they'll meet. And the drainage meets on the first Wednesday of every month, both at 7:00 PM. So we would welcome your input, we need your input there to make sure, we want to make sure that when we go through this, we handle it and we cover everything we possibly can. Keith, one of the things that I'd like to see, I know, I think Russell's been trying to track it down, but you referenced it, and so maybe you've got it right there, is I'd like to see that 2005 ordinance, if we can see what it was and what it went to, I think that will help us understand, kind of, yeah, guide what we gave away and what we need to look at possibly.
Essentially, for Russell's standpoint, you have to get a copy of the pre-2005 zoning code and copy those pages for the board.
Okay. But I knew it was somewhere around 2004, 2005, but I wasn't sure exactly, but I remember I was out there in the public, trying to fight it, so. So I appreciate that. I think that's gonna be key. I'd like to see that go to all the council members and also all the board members of the comp and the drainage board. Thank you. I think that's what I've got.
Yeah. If I could chime in. Steve, you done?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in full support of this. We need to really take a really hard look at this. I can tell you, you know, on a personal level, from where I live, out west, there's a lot of nurseries, and there's a lot of activity and a lot of abuses, I'll say, at this point, that probably should be addressed, you know, from a residential point of view. And I urge residents to come to these meetings, voice your opinion, you will not be ignored by any stretch of the imagination. We need to hear from you. We would love to hear from you as much as possible on this. We need your input. And so I'm in total support of this, and, you know, this is a pervasive problem that is only going to get worse because of the abuses of a few that have ruined it for many throughout our town, from end to end, from east to west end, and we need to address this very quickly, I think. That's all.
Dee?
No, I'm good. I concur with everybody. I'm in full support of this, 100%.
Okay. Freddie, go ahead.
Yeah, I am very familiar with this, because I have, but I think one of the requirements, we want to make sure that these nurseries have a retention pond. So they water sometimes, you know, long and a lot, and it needs to make sure that that's got a place to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great point.
Yes, so do I. Anyhow, absolutely, it's critical. That's why we're putting this in play tonight, to cease and desist for now, moving forward until we can get it modified and adjusted. We had a meeting earlier this week, and that same meeting room we met in is where those boards meet. So the other thing, Andy, we're gonna have to add more chairs back on the perimeter of that room, because there's not gonna be enough with everybody that's gonna probably be attending with what's there.
We'll have as many chairs as we need in here.
Well, you can always.
And if we have to use this room for overflow, then we'll do that.
Okay. So anyhow, just so you all know, if there's not enough seating in that room, they will move that meeting into this chamber, okay? Just so everybody knows. So just because there's not a seat for you, they'll move it or get you a chair, whatever needs to happen. So don't not attend. Your input in attending those are gonna be very important moving forward, and we appreciate you coming out. So I'm in full support of this, and call the questions.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Number nine?
This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with CAP Government, Inc., for Building Plan Review Inspection and Emergency Services, which establishes the scope and compensation for their services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
I'll be brief, Mayor. The town went out for a full solicited procurement at the end of our current provider, which is actually CAP's contract for building and code, building services for the town. We had three respondents respond to the RFP. The selection committee vetted, wonderful and all-star selection committee, vetted all the applications, and after two meetings, including one half a day with complete presentations, almost unanimously came to the conclusion that CAP Government should remain within the Town of Southwest Ranches. At this point in time, one of the vendors has advised the town that it recognized that it did not meet the requirements of the RFP, and graciously withdrew its name from consideration. So at this point, we have CAP and Calvin Giordano and Associates. The main, there are a lot of differences between the two, aside from the procurement, but one of the main differences is CAP has agreed to maintain the 75-25% split on building code services fee with the town, and although a little bifurcated, Calvin Giordano was offering a 15-85 split on building code services. So it's here for your review and consideration.
I might need a motion in a second, don't have it yet.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Public comment on this matter?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. What we have here is the third respondent had to disqualify themselves because of a catch-22 that was built into the contract. The catch-22 is this: without a contract in hand, they cannot certify from Broward County the individuals as to their competency by Broward County. So our contract says, from what I understand, because I have not read it, that all of the people have to be certified at the time of the contract. And this is a catch-22, therefore forcing a new player on the block to fold. I dislike the two respondents vehemently that we have selected. The one who has been forced to withdraw is the better choice for this town. And because of the way we wrote the contract, or the specs, or whatever you want to call it, they had to withdraw. Because without a contract, Broward County cannot certify them. And our specs say that you have to have them certified before you can get the contract. A definite catch-22, and takes the little guy, the new guy, out of the ballpark. I have a solution that may be, that if you saw, may I continue for another minute? That if we took the third respondent and made them number one, and gave them 60 days to certify all of their people through Broward County, and if they did not, the number-two respondent would automatically get it, which would be CAP. I think that is what would be fair. Because number three, which is the individual company that has the lowest prices and the best deal for this town, and the best knowledge of this town, CAP never learned about our town, and how it works, and how the people are, and all of us have little stories that we can tell, and Doug is my witness, I have a story also, where the testing of the product was jumping up and down on my wood deck as a reinspection. And that is the quality of CAP's inspections when they're put up against the wall and having been caught. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to correct one thing for the record. The provision that Noel's referring to, that it comes directly from the Florida statutes, it's nothing that the town created, made up, instilled to the contract. And Noel, you can look it up later, chapter 765 Florida statutes, and it states that a municipality may not award a contract for building code services to a vendor who is not certified by the county to which they are doing business in. So it wasn't even an option, it was just straight-out Florida statute said you couldn't do it, so.
Good evening, Council. John Eastman, 188th Avenue. I agree with what Noel said, and I won't rehash all that because you know what's going on. But I was in the room for the vetting, I listened to all three presentations, it went on about three and a half hours. I made a lot of notes. It might take me a couple minutes to go through this, but I also agree with what Noel said about the third respondent who's withdrawn being the best choice for our town. He's unknown, he'd be servicing only our town. I believe CGA is servicing 38 other cities. You know, where's the loyalty there? There is none. It's just a dollar, chasing the dollars and having performance on your bottom line. Both Calvin and Giordano and CAP both felt that the fees were not adequate. The third respondent was the only one that said that he would start waiving reinspection fees and look for lowering our fees, which are horribly high for simple projects that most of us do on the weekend, which is why nobody pulls a permit anymore. But this item of certification of code services inspectors and plan review officers, you can't have a sitting plan review officer in a city and then have somebody else holding that position at the same time. It doesn't work. So that's the law that Keith's referring to. But what we need to do is put this contract back out again, keep things the way they are for the moment, put it back out again, and let all three come back. There was a gentleman in the back of the room at the end that came up, and I think he was from Broward County, and he actually does the certification of these building officials. And all the gentlemen that code services had submitted were all vetted, and basically, they were certified, but because of that rule, they weren't, you know, actively certified, because there's somebody else holding the position in our town, so we can't have duplicity. And they need the contract awarded. So I think a 60-day period would be a good idea. There's many stories about CAP in our town. They're one of the most hated entities we have here, and it's time to get rid of them. They do nothing for us, they have no loyalty to us. And as far as Calvin Giordano and Associates, when I sat at South Broward for four years, they designed our drainage issues that we fought them with for 10 years. It was them that did it to us, that flooded us, specifically them. So to reward them with a contract in this town, I don't think that's a good idea. We have to remember what they did to us, and that was just, in the last couple of years, sorted out. I mean, the flooding that we went through here for over 10 years because there was not rational engineering over there. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
David Kozensky, 6411 Holliday Trail. I'd agree with John about putting the contract back out. Kind of has to do with the F-word. Before I get to that, when we that live in Southwest Ranches make a request for bidding for construction work, I think I get a feeling of maybe the Southwest Ranches enhancement fee. You live in Southwest Ranches, you get to pay more. It's like bringing a car to a repair shop, and if you're bringing in a Chevrolet, they give you the Chevrolet rate, but you bring the Mercedes, you get the Mercedes rate. That's what I'm feeling when I make requests, like, "Come out and give me a bid on this." Couple of years ago, I had impact windows installed in my home. A contractor came out, full-day job from Home Depot, pulled the permit, and at the end of the job, CAP came out, did the inspection. They denied. The job was complete, they denied it. I called the contractor, he told me it was bull, you know, the rest. It had to do with screws that CAP said were not in every hole. My contractor said, "That's a lie." And he said, "Go take a screwdriver and poke it in a hole, in every hole, and you will find a screw in every one of those holes." And I did it. Now, when I get back to, at the beginning, the F-word, the F-word is fraud. And when you lie about money, that's fraud. And we don't need garbage like CAP working on our town, we're better than that. I say we put the contract back out.
Any additional public comment?
Tony Brown, 6231 Hancock Road. I agree, to be fair to the residents of the city, you guys need to put this contract back out. For inspectors to come out and get repaid to come back out, if they find something that they don't like, there's no incentive for these guys to pass an inspection. It's not fair to your residents, we want to pull, whatever, and also, you want it done correctly. So I would appreciate if you guys would put this back out, and you want to be fair to your residents, and you guys live in the same city too, so it doesn't hurt to at least try this one more time, let's see if we can find a better company to do the job. Thank you.
I may be wrong on this, but Eastman was here, and one of the things that he said was that CAP wanted to raise the prices, and that bothers me, because they were higher, we got them down, and now they want to go back up. And I would like to know just exactly what their plans are. The other thing is, if the other vendor, it was a technicality, if you don't have a job, you can't qualify for the job. I think we had this on a bid that we did on a landscape company once, you know, where they didn't have a form for, I don't know, they had to order a book or something, and they didn't have the book, so they didn't qualify. You know, I mean, you can put stuff in there to make it so nobody can qualify. And I think that if it's possible for the vendor to be able to qualify, then, and that's a state rule that knocked him out, not the town, but, and I don't know if it's possible, if he can even reapply. But I think that we really have to look at whether or not they're gonna go up or not, because that was a statement they made, was that they wanted to raise the prices. Both vendors, only the third vendor was gonna go down and wasn't gonna charge for reinspections. So I think you need to ask that question.
Just for clarification with the record, the town sets the prices in the contract, so that statement was not accurate. It's by us.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. You know, I can think of a time, five or six years ago, where the discussion was, should we bring it back inside? Or bring it inside, not back inside, but bring it inside. Maybe this is another option you need to look at, because we're starting a building boom out here. I've been down to Town Hall a lot while I was between jobs, and there's a line of people here every day to talk to the building department about permits and plans, et cetera. So maybe this is the opportunity to hire a building official and a couple of inspectors, and rather than pay the profit margins to the owners of these companies or whoever, we bring it inside and we cut the cost for the residents. we bring it inside and we cut the cost for the residents.
Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us.
Mayor, before you deliberate on this item, you may want the vendor to say a few words. It's up to you.
Who's ever going to speak on behalf of CAP? Like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Andy Russell and Keith. My name is Carlos Benin. I'm the president and owner of CAP, CAP Government. Truly sorry if we've failed in delivering the service that we have been entrusted to deliver. And what I can tell your residents, that my staff, and I'm here with Jack Fisher, with Lisa, with Hope and with Joyce, that we will individually address any concerns. I am really hurt by the fact that people hurt or hate my company and hate my employees or the way we deliver the service. On Tuesday of this week, our company turned 29 years. 29 years.
Bless you.
Bless you. And I've never heard of any, of so much criticism of our company, or at least of our services, that I heard tonight. So it's humbling to be here and to hear that. If I've done something wrong, or if we've done something wrong, I'm here to tell you that we will correct it. There are some statements that are completely out of our control. I don't think that anything to do with fees, you all know very well that that has nothing to do with our company. Also, I heard some comments about Robert withdrawing his bid. Obviously, that's got nothing to do with us. There was a ranking by a very professional group of individuals, a technical review committee, and that review committee ranked us number one overall. We've been here since 2006. We'd like to stay and improve, obviously, from what I hear, the services that are being provided. The fees that we submitted are not higher than anybody else's. They're the same as they have been for the last five years. In fact, they came down from when we were originally selected. And we committed, even though my costs have gone up, to keep the same fees going forward in the next, in this next contract. I will stay quiet for now and answer questions that the council, the mayor, you and the council may have with me.
Questions, have?
I don't have any specific questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Freddie.
I just want to say this. I have a lot of experience working with you people through my church, and I want to say, I want to thank you because you've always been very efficient with me and give me no problems.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. I think we're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, it's back to us for discussion.
Well, I'll lead off just briefly. One of the comments that I was real happy to see was the, and I'm going to use the word loosely, all-star panel of professionals and retired building inspectors, chief inspectors from other municipalities that made up the panel that did the ranking. And I was real happy to hear, and I want to thank those people for volunteering their time. I didn't know the results until, obviously, now, but they volunteered their time and their expertise, and you're probably looking at collectively decades of effort on their part into the ranking. And anybody who has the agenda can see how the ranking sorted itself out. I just want to say thank you to them, you know, publicly. It's on the record.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, a few comments. One of them is similar to Gary's comment, that we brought in individuals that had a lot of expertise in this area for a lot of years and to do the evaluation for us because we knew this was a tricky contract and really wanted to see what the results were from a completely unbiased group of individuals that had expertise in the area. The thing that worries me at this point, hearing the feedback from the residents, which I value and I appreciate, is that at this point, to go against that ranking really opens up the town to all kinds of issues that I'm frankly pretty uncomfortable with. So I would, I would, I just, I really have to think about that before we go someplace As far as going in-house, which is an interesting thought, but one of the real keys to when the last time we talked about that, where the decision, we did not do that, is exactly what we're talking about here. And that is, is that building comes and goes in waves. Back in 2010, you know, we could have gotten by with no inspectors for probably about 18 to 24 months, and now we find that, you know, we are really, there's a line there to have work done. And that's a danger for a municipality, because we can't shuffle employees in and out like that for those kinds of waves. So that's why, one of the key reasons why, in fact, we go with a vendor for this type of service. So it's critical. They can add and they can subtract, and it's not an issue to us. However, with that said, when we did our last waste contract, as part of that, the vendor volunteered to do something which I think is exceptional, and I would challenge CAP to do the same. And that is that we now have on our website a link that takes immediate, a resident can go on our website when they've got an issue, and that issue goes right to, it doesn't even come to Town Hall, it goes right to Waste Pro. Vice President of Waste Pro shows up on his desk and says, "This is the issue that the resident is having." I think that's a powerful tool for the residents. And I would like to, when we get done with our conversation, I'd like to know whether you all are open to that or not, and whether you can accomplish that or not. I think that's critical. I'll be honest with you, I hear, I hear issues from residents every now and again from different things that come up from building. But, you know, residents are like everybody else. They're busy, and it's not until we have an event like this that we really get to hear the full brunt of the feedback. It shouldn't be that way. We should be able to hear this feedback as it's happening, and those issues should be resolved as it's happening. It shouldn't be pent up for all this time, and then all of a sudden, it spills out. So that would be a very strong recommendation from me to the folks at CAP. And like I said, before we close out and before we vote, I'd like to hear your response to that.
Anybody else?
I guess I'll go.
Yeah. Can I? Sure. I'm sorry. Yeah, I wanted, Keith, could you mention the panel that I was alluding to earlier?
Yeah. The members of the SC were diverse in the building department scheme. We had Robin Byrd, who just retired as the Building Services Director, Building and Zoning Services Director for the City of Pompano Beach. We had Alexis Leal from Muniya Construction Management Group, do about $500 million in construction a year. We had Al Gill, who is a town resident with A&amp;F Group, who just built the hospital. Many of you probably see A&amp;F signs everywhere. We had Pam Butler, who is the permit runner and works with building departments all over for Pulte Homes. And we had, from our town staff, Russell Munoz. By the way, Alexis Leal from Muniya Construction Management, it's also a town resident who lives in country estates. So we had, oh, I'm sorry. You said Al Gill's not a resident now. I thought he was. At some point, he might have been. So of that group, it was comprised of both town staff, resident, and all professionals who, as you mentioned previously, have well over 100 years of building services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So anyway, so moving forward, I've heard complaints over the years with different issues. Couple of different things that I've heard. Somebody bought a front door from Home Depot for $250, and the permit fee was $500 to put the door in. Somebody else was putting up a chain-link fence, and the permit fee for the fence was $800. So we've heard different stuff along the way that are a little outrageous or offset. So what I'm going to do is ask that the town administrator take the opportunity, along with CAP, to look at the fees again and see what we can do, if we can do better. Because I know a year, 18 months ago, we looked at it and we did some minor improvements on it. But I think under those circumstances, that we should absolutely look at those fees again and what we're charging and whatnot. The other thing I think they do a lot of times, and I don't know this process that well, but they'll get Davies' fees, they'll get Weston's fees, and everybody else's fees. Well, I don't really care about everybody else's fees, but what's reasonable for us, you know? So I don't know how that comes into play, but I would say that I would like that to happen. The other thing I would say is, I think, what's our exit clause here along the way if we were ever to terminate them, Keith?
It's 90 days with or without cause.
Okay. All right. So when and if we're not happy, or we want to make a change, it's a 90-day exit strategy. So if we wanted to put it back out for any reason or whatever, we could. So I'd like everybody to kind of keep that in mind moving forward. But it sounds like CAP has good intention. I would say, you know, they made some changes recently, which has been positive from the residents as far as Hope and Joy and whatnot, as far as internal in the House here, that most of the people I've talked to related to working and dealing with them have been nothing but elated with the feedback we've gotten related to that change in staffing here at Town Hall. So I think with the ranking, with the qualification with the people, I think kind of our hands are tied. I think we have to, you know, move forward, and let's see what we've got, and let's see what we can fix along the way. Any, you want to jump in here?
Are you all in favor of having a resident feedback?
I'd like to have the little button on the website, if that's possible.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. In favor of that, if that works?
Just for clarification, the town can easily put a link there, and CAP can give us whatever email that goes to. Because it's basically a complaint form.
Right, but there's two components of it, okay? One is the technology piece, which I know can be done. The other one is how is it going to be handled? And that's what I want to hear from CAP. Number one, that they're willing to do it, and how they're going to handle it.
Yeah, the whole commitment angle. We can put the button on all day long.
I just wanted to clarify it.
Doesn't mean squat if they don't look at it.
All right. Carlos, or whoever wants to come up and address this for us.
Lisa, you want to take care of it? Come on. Yeah, I think everybody knows Lisa. She's here mostly every day, and, come on, you want Hope and?
She's amazing.
Come on.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I think she's the one that's best to answer this thing. Her cell phone is better than that button, and her computer's on all the time, but if you want, I mean, we can certainly modify what we need to do on our end. I think it's more on the town side as far as, you know, creating that link. Russell?
We currently have, just so everyone is aware, we do have a link right now to the citizen portal that they use, which is called CitizenServe. That is a computer system that they utilize to input all of their building permits, and residents can look up the status of building permits, plan reviews, things like that. I'm not sure if Citizen Serve has a component to track complaints or issues, but if it does, certainly, that's something we'll need to promote, because the link to Citizen Serve is already there.
Let me make this a little bit easier and direct it a little bit more, if you don't mind, Mayor. Will CAP stipulate that if Lisa, if that's your designee, gets an email from a resident about an issue or concern, that CAP will agree to respond within 24 hours, meaning business day is not a weekend, 24 business day hours of receiving such comment or complaint?
Thank you, Keith. We will continue to respond within 24 hours.
Beyond that, beyond that, as I said when I was speaking, is I don't hear about those things. I don't hear about those issues, okay? What I'm looking for is a way to respond and document what's there, so that if I wish, or any of us wish, or if the residents wish, we can get a list of what the complaints have been, see if there's something that is recurring, see if there's something that we need to work on. The way it is today, and I appreciate the phone call, phone calls are always very good, but unfortunately, that does not create that level of documentation that I'm looking for. You know, for the code, we just recently put on our website all the outstanding complaints that are out there and all, and where they are and the status and everything, and I think that is excellent. They've done a great job at doing that, and I've looked at it, and I can watch things progress. That's kind of what I'm looking for here.
I say that we will be willing to do it. We'll work with the IT Department of the town to make sure that it gets implemented.
Okay. I need to do a little clarification. Those complaints are not about code. Those are complaints that have been brought to code.
And I think, and this is where I, you know, I just spoke to Russell, I don't know if you're looking for a rolling complaint log online.
No, 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 I'm not. What I'm looking for is documentation that can be, in other words, I don't need all the residents to, or us to be able at any moment, see all the complaints that are out there. But if I'm hearing a complaint from residents, you know, from the residents out there, I need to be able to get a log and see what's going on.
So let me say this and ask you even better, if you don't mind, which also we have with CAP as well, that monthly, they just give us a list of any complaints that came in and how they were resolved.
Okay.
And I know there's not that many, so it's not a massive time situation. But would CAP consent to doing that monthly?
Yes, no problem, Keith.
The only other thing I'll add to that is, we're going to put a link on there that's going to be an email directly to CAP. We can have a copy of that email come to town staff as well.
Good. Good.
And the final thing that I'm going to bring up, because I've spoken to your staff about it, and it hasn't been mentioned yet, and a little bit surprised, but I personally believe that the submission of building plans, and I know you now have the capability you didn't when we first started, we really need to go digital. That it's costing the town a lot of money in scanning and time and everything else. And just curious, only because it doesn't, it wasn't asked, and I apologize, Mayor.
I don't mind a bit.
The town is looking to go in that system to avoid these countless plans that are, you know, all over the place, misplaced, et cetera. How can we work with you to move forward during this term on going all digital?
Thank you, Keith. We have a, we started in 2013 to invest in a, in software that would help us in, not only on the permitting side, but especially on the plans review side. We spent a number of hours, a number of dollars in investing in new software. In 2016, we finally developed our own software to allow us to do plan review electronically. We introduced it with our educational clients, which is the easiest way for us to get started because they don't have necessarily permitting softwares that would conflict with the plans review software. Over the last two years, we have successfully launched a plans review, electronic plan review process or program, where we now have a, let's say, a design professional upload their plans into a secured cloud. We download them into our plans reviewers' computer, and we can do simultaneous plans review just that quickly and that easily. And we would be happy to explore that possibility in the town of Southwest Ranches. We've been doing it for two years. We kept it on the educational sector, simply it's a little bit easier to manage.
You think it would be good?
Okay.
Thank you. I want to back up for just a second in dealing with the monthly report of possible complaints or issues. Most people don't know this, but council members on a monthly basis get an administrator's report, and in that includes
Police reports.
Police reports. It also includes departmental reports on everybody, on all the various departments, and it includes code violations, public records requests, things of that nature. It's a snapshot, a synopsis of them on a monthly basis that we all receive digitally and paper-wise. And I'd like to, and if we could include that in a page, hopefully, there will be very little, but that way, it's an automatic process that comes to us.
We address them monthly.
Yeah, and it will come to us by putting Yeah, and it will come to us. By putting it into that report, we now have a vehicle to get to each one of us individually, and, you know, we can say, "Hey, what's, what's going on?"
Keep us in the game.
Exactly. You know, so it'll be, it'll just be a, an automatic thing, as opposed to us trying to hunt it down.
Right, that's good. Okay. All right, Carlos, I think we're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. Want to call the question? Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, number 10. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the First Amendment to the agreement between the town of Southwest Ranches and the town of Davie, for the delivery of public safety services, including emergency medical, fire protection, fire and life safety, and police services. Authorizing the mayor and town attorney to execute the First Amendment to the agreement, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, you want me to speak to Andrew?
I was going to hand it to Andy.
I have a motion in a second, first.
Either one of you.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Andy, you want to go, or you want Keith to go?
If, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah, go right ahead.
As you know, we entered into a new public safety contract with, with the town of Davie last year for the procurement of police and fire services. This is the First Amendment to that contract on the police side. The staffing that Davie provides to us includes working out of this building, a detective and a service aide. The service aide that, that we have in a position at the present time, is actually an officer who's on light duty, who will not be going back to active duty road patrol. He will be separating from the Davie Police Department, and so what this is, is the first step in a two-step process. What we will do is, we're, we're removing that staffing requirement from Davie, and the expense of that staffing requirement from this contract, and that at our next meeting, it is our intention to bring you a contract, where we will be contracting with that individual to provide service aide services to the town. So this is, will be revenue neutral to the town, but we're keeping the, the person in this position that we want to keep in that position, on the high level of service that we've, we've gotten from, in effect, having a, a fully trained officer, serving as a service aide. So, thank you, Mayor.
Charlie.
Keith, anything you want to add?
No, I, I think the administrator did a fine job.
[laughing]
Explaining the purpose of this. I, I will tell you that Davie is scheduled to approve this right after we do.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome. Any public comment on this matter? Seen no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any, any questions up here? We're good.
Yeah, I do, I have.
Okay, go right ahead.
One thing that I don't know, I don't think I've heard is, is, since this is really tied to an individual, is there any thought on, in the future, how this might transition back, or is that?
I can answer that one. From a legal perspective, we did not tie it directly to an individual. And we did that on purpose, because it may be in the town's best interests at some point, to potentially hire another replacement, you know, at, at its choosing to replace this individual. We left it with Davie, though, and they wrote it in their warehouse clauses, essentially, that we have the opportunity at any point to come back to them, for restaffing of that position. One of our big issues that we had at first, that we resolved, and so the public can hear how these things go, is originally, they pulled that, the way that they had drafted the contract, the monies were, were still on a 4% or 5%, whatever the number is, a compound automatic escalator each year. So by pulling it out the way we did, we don't have to worry about that escalator, where a $50,000 position, if we come back in five years, is now a $70,000 or $80,000 position. So we did it like this on purpose, to keep the cost in line with the reality, and hopefully, it will work out.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm in full support of it. I'm just, you know, nothing is forever, so I just want to make sure there's a plan in there, when, when we, whatever, for whatever reason, we dictate, we have to, we have to move on to another individual.
Okay.
And by the way, just
For further clarification, the agreement states that, in the event this individual is replaced, and the town elects to choose another individual, they just need to approve it. So it's in there.
All right.
Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Number 11. A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement in the amount of $480,275.0 with Florida Engineering and Development Corp., to complete the Dykes Road Drainage and Water Quality Project. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, approving a budget amendment, as adopted in ordinance 2017-015 to current fiscal year 2017, 2018, in the amount of $87,765, and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Because of what, I, I'm sure there'll be a lot of comment, because I know we've got a lot of drainage experts in this town. But if it's all right with you, I'd like to call up Rodley, the town engineer, to speak to, give a quick overview of what the project entails.
Perfect. Good, come on up, Rod.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rodley, for the record. Yeah, I'm really actually excited about this project. It's a, it's a pretty critical project in the town, moving forward. A project that we've had a, a very difficult time actually moving, moving forward, because we had to bid it three different times. This last time, we basically took a phased approach to it, because we weren't able to get the pricing to the point where we could actually move forward. So, what we, I'm sorry, what we ended up doing is, essentially, it's, it's a connection from Dykes Road to the Ivanhoe Canal there on the east side of Colusa Corners, and it just provides a, a positive connection from Dykes Road to that canal. Accentuating that is the fact that South Brower Drainage Districts just got the okay from South Florida to reduce a weir that they had existing at that outlet control structure in the Ivanhoe Canal. And now, instead of being at a certain elevation, like an elevation of four, before we could actually discharge into the C11, now we have the ability to discharge directly at their control elevation. So the, the importance of the phasing, as you can see up here, is phase two, phase one is essentially from Dykes Road to the east, to the, to the power lines that you see there, the FPL power lines in, in the middle of Colusa Corners. And then phase two would be from the, the power lines there, further to the east, to the Ivanhoe Canal. We, the, the original budget that we had, would, phase one would be budgeted, and we have enough money to do that, but we're asking for a, a budget amendment to be able to complete phase two, because we won't ultimately get the, the benefit of the lowered weir. We won't get the ultimate benefit of the open, of the new lowered elevation weir unless we complete phase two. So we're pushing, hopefully the council approves, to go ahead and do the contract with a budget amendment.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Another thing that we did want to, want to note is that, on the southeast corner, there's, the plans, we went forward with bidding twin culverts that basically provide vehicular access to the property to the south of Colusa. We do anticipate that if council is okay eliminating that connection, we've gotten a, a different set of plans highlighting just a, a complete canal that goes through to the, to the east Ivanhoe Canal, and that would save us, based on the, the current cost that we got in the bid, approximately, we're hoping, $40,000 or so, so.
How, how wide will that canal be?
I think it's like 30, about 30 feet wide, if I remember the cross section correctly, yeah.
Okay. All right. Public comment, bringing on?
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board. We voted at the last meeting unanimously to support both parts of this, this plan. Importantly, both parts, because if we do the first phase, and we don't have money for the second phase, it has the capability of providing storage for water, but the most benefit occurs when the, the, the project is complete, and it's tied into the Ivanhoe Canal. Can't reinforce the safety component of this. Everybody has seen Dykes Road after the 100-year storms we seem to have every summer now. So, you know, I, I think Gary mentioned that he went through there, and it was four feet deep. So this will alleviate that problem, take the water off into that big lake, and then ultimately off into C11. Thank you.
Bill Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. If you turn to page 52 of 81, and you look at the financial chart there, and since Marty didn't correct it yet, I will. It says, "Breakdown of the estimated cost share for the lowest bid is below." If you look at the base bid with utility allowance, and you will see that there is a addition error, a third grade addition error, where 100 and 150, and then 156, instead of being 301,400, should be 306,400. I was told this was a scribe's error, and I pointed out that the scribes, on the second error, we use that stop sign that's across from Ms. Emily's office, and the end result of what happens to the scribe. So, he said it was a entire department worked on this, so I said, "We'll send all of the department back to third grade for addition, remedial addition." So, hi, Marty. Anyway, so that's my take on this right here. You've got a $5,000 error.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. It's a little more money than we wanted to spend at one shot, but we are saving a substantial amount. We're getting the project done. And this is kind of just the beginning of a critical component, because we've got a lot of flooding to the west. The, the water tends to pool up against Griffin, we can't get it out. And this is going to give us a way to have a connection, to start routing some of that water east. And I just can't compliment Kevin enough. I mean, he has a great relationship with South Florida. He's getting control over that outlet again, and, you know, he's really massaging all the control levels in the area. And, you know, this, this canal, this feeder canal has backed up and flooded many times, but once we get that, that weir open again, and draining into the C11, it'll make this system work great. But it will give us a lot more future capability with flooding we currently have to the west of Dykes Road, which sometimes is severe. Sometimes people have three feet in their backyards, and there's nowhere to put it. So now we have some way to get it out. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any additional public comment? Seen no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the council.
Mayor, I'd like to adjust the amendment based on the engineers' comments that we're going to be using, doing the, the open canal. So I'd like to adjust my motion to approve, with that included.
Okay.
I'm not sure who seconded, but.
I agree.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Rod, does that change the agreement at all, or that's just in field?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Call the question, please.
I would like to say, before we do, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you guys were ready to go.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll just say that of all of the drainage issues that I'm aware of in town, this is number one.
Oh, yeah.
This is number one.
Yeah, no question.
I remember, and, and as, I think Bob, it was you, said, you know, this is an annual 100-year storm that we get, that when it, when it hits, it's, it's like cars, cars come down there, they try and make the U-turn, they get stuck in the canal, and literally, within 15 minutes after one of them is pulled out, and oh, by the way, while they're in there, Dykes Road is completely closed off. So within 15 minutes of pulling a car out, somebody else is doing the exact same thing, and they get stuck. Literally, I've seen that happen. So it's, this is, this is, this is as big a problem as we've got drainage-wise in town. It's, it's good to see it have the opportunity to get resolved.
My turn. Thank you. Just to, to remind everybody, we, just recently, last week, you know, ahead of the rating season, thank goodness, we extended the traffic delineators further down Dykes Road to prevent potential U-boat commanders from going in, and we shored up the shoulders with some crushed gravel, I believe was the original, the original fix. But, you know, where there's a will, there's a way.
It'll happen.
And, you know.
It'll happen.
But I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, the, the, the traffic delineators, and that's also known as a PVC pole that bounces around, is moved, you know, is further down Dykes Road, to prevent the U-turns in that area. But more importantly, Marty, this is a question for you. Let's assume that we get the $40,000, and that's a ballpark number right now, savings. That leaves us with 47,765. Where are we getting the money from, Marty? It's a budget, budget amendment. Can you elaborate on that?
Certainly. Councilmembers, Mayor, for the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, the town financial administrator. We are transferring the prior year excess, that surplus in the neighborhood of $220,000. The fiscal year that we ended, it's unaudited presently, but it's sitting right now at $220,077. For the current year we're in, we have already committed